Are you guys all set? They call the mics are muted still.
All right, Chris, ready when you are.
You are live.
All right. Welcome, the September 3rd, Town of Groveland, planning the running board of appeals for September 3rd, 2025. Permission to open?
Motion to open.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, where we go. Welcome, everybody. First off, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Brian Canizaro, has thankfully joined us to help work for the town. Nice to have a full board again, so thank you, appreciate your service.
Thank you, I hope I can do well.
Sure you will, looking forward to it. All right, first on the agenda here. Appeal special permit 2025-2. We have eight Pecker Lane, Ryan and Kelly Flanagan owners, assessors map 16 lot 036-0, R3 residential district. Appeal of the building commissioner's determination regarding the continuation of a non-conforming use in operation of an automotive repair shop. Sorry, I didn't have enough coffee today. Or on the alternative, a request for a special permit under 50.4.5 to allow operation of a motor vehicle repair shop on the premises. Representing the applicants is Paul A., I apologize for saying this last name correctly. Magli O'Ketty?
Correct.
All right. All right. We hear the applicant, please.
This is Chairman, Members of Board, Attorney Paul Magli O'Ketty, offices in Haverhill, Massachusetts. Today's evening, on behalf of Ryan and Kelly Flanagan.
Your mic's muted, can you make sure it's green?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, loud and clear, thank you.
Gotcha. Need me to repeat that again, or are we good?
I want you to do it just for me, to make sure they got it.
Okay, so Attorney Paul Magli O'Ketty, offices in Haverhill, Mass, representing Ryan and Kelly Flanagan with regard to the appeal of the building inspector's decision and their special permit application to add an auto repair shop to property that they own at eight Pecker Lane. I submitted an application as well as a brief in support of the application to the board. I'm sure that you have gone through the documents. I'll summarize the brief, just to go over some of the points for you. First of all, with regard to the appeal. We challenged the building inspector's contention that there was a lapse in use that discontinued and therefore the grandfather status is no longer in effect. Attached to the brief that I provided, I showed you a timeline that was prepared by the Flanagan family and their parents with regard to how the business has been in effect since 1950. And it's odd, the property has had a business continuously since then. The only lapse that occurred was a short lapse between 2014 and 2016, but it was less than two years. And most recently, the businesses that have been ongoing there have been a painting contractors business, as well as an auto detailing business. About five or six years ago, he leased the property and an auto repair shop opened up on the site. It's been operating there without incident for many years. It's a small, one bay operation. And it's by appointment only, so there's not cars coming and going all day long. So that being said, I think that summarizes our challenge. And I would like to point out too, that with all the business that have been there, starting out with the paving business from the 1950s all the way through the early 2000s, then with the contracting business and the auto detailing business, there's always been an aspect of auto repair there. Because the paving business, they actually had two mechanics that worked there full time and those vehicles had to be repaired on site on a regular basis. With the painting contractors business, he repaired his vehicles there. And then the auto detailing speaks for itself. Automotive component to that business as well. So that's the link and the connection between the similarities of the businesses. By way of argument, so that goes to challenging the building inspector's contention. Now, the zoning code, your zoning code allows for the change or extension of non-conforming use. So that's the second part of the application that we filed with the Town of Groveland. So as I've said, that there has been an ongoing continuous use since 1950s at the site. Most recently, up until the automotive shop was there, there was the painting business and the detailing business. So now we're looking to keep the painting business and just change it from a painting and detailing to a painting and auto repair. And we believe that that's an extension or a change of the use that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than it has already been there. As I said earlier, you know, this auto repair has been operating there for five or six years without incident. An issue arose between the neighbors, there was a neighbor dispute. It's my understanding that there's ongoing litigation that's going on and that's what precipitated this. The complaint that was issued and the action of the building inspector. The neighbors had every right to make the challenge, I'm not saying they didn't, but I think for purposes of this evening, which I got to look at the business itself and is it more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there? And I don't think it is. And I think the fact that it's been there without incident for so many years kind of shows that, I think it's self-explanatory. And in addition to everything that I stated, according to your ordinance, as part of the special permit process, we also have to show that we meet the criteria listed in Article 14, Section 6A. And I addressed all of those criteria in the application that I submitted. That, you know, the business that we're looking for is very small. It doesn't disrupt the neighborhood at all, as a matter of fact. If you drive by there while the shop was operating, you wouldn't even know there was a shop there. There's not a lot of cars coming and going, like I said, it's by appointment only, it's only one bay. You just can't do a high-volume business and that's not what the intention is. And again, when you look at the master plan of the city where, you know, I was, I did look at it, and you try to foster small business. So this is a small business, I mean, this isn't a large operation at all. And, you know, the owners of the property, you know, they're just trying to add to their income by leasing that space there, so. You know, that being said, like I said, I think we meet all the criteria for the special permit, for the use as an auto repair shop, which is an extension of the existing use as a contractor yard. So that being said, I do have the owners here, if you have any questions of them. And I know that they stressed to me, I met with them at the property earlier. Family's been there for a long time. They actually owned almost that entire street at one time. And then they sold off parcels a little bit at a time. The mother still resides at 13 Pecker Lane. So I thank you for your consideration and we're here to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for the applicant? John, Brian, any questions for the applicant?
I'm just trying to observe this, but nothing at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, we do have, as you can see, a packed house and we do have someone from the complainant up here as well, but I think I would like to hear from Sam before we hear them, just to see what the, where the complaint came from and some of the details around there. And then after that, we'll get to public comment as well.
Hi, Sam Jocelyn, zoning enforcement officer for the Town of Groveland. This complaint came to me from the Lakes. I initially denied their complaint. They came back with some further information from their attorney that appeared to be correct. Especially the two-year statute piece where there was a pause in operations. If the, if there was not a pause of that, I would certainly, and that can be proven, I would certainly be amenable to redacting that portion of my enforcement order. But based on the information given to me by the Lakes attorney, it appeared that that was the case. As far as the special permit portion, that's certainly up to the board, whether or not they look at this as a continuation or some other use that is equally or less impactful than what was there initially. I know Skip Sheehan's operation was fairly large. I'm not sure what came after it.
Questions for Sam?
Yeah, I have one. This two-year abandonment criteria, can you expound upon that? I mean, what?
Yep, in the state zoning 40A, Section 6, as well as in our own zoning, if you have a grandfathered or pre-existing non-conforming use and that use goes fallow for more than two years, you no longer enjoy that grandfathering status.
So that status would either allow or disallow a grandfathered status? It doesn't apply to anything else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Sam? Does the law speak to whether it's a material change in use for the business?
As far as that goes, it's whether or not it is more detrimental. If it's a change in use, our bylaw requires a special permit be granted and that requirement relates to equal or, you know, less detrimental in impact to the neighborhood.
And what is considered, oh, I apologize.
No, please, please.
What is considered a detriment? For semantic reasons?
You could pretty much consider anything. What I would consider detrimental to what a neighbor might would be certainly different. Could be noise, could be lighting, could be traffic patterns, could be pretty much anything. Anything that the board wants to look at as far as detrimental goes, its impacts to the neighborhood.
So it's really an open-ended decision to be made, what detriment you want?
Yeah, I mean, there's like everything, there's a dozen court cases out there that have examples, but really, it's the board's conclusion as to, is it more detrimental or not?
At the plan, but we can put those.
All good.
Just one question from me.
Sure.
Are we able to work with the town to confirm business status, continuity rather? I'm assuming there would be registration filings and yearly tax filings to prove whether or not a business operated?
I would think so.
It might be John too.
Yeah, I would think so, I mean, if there's a way to prove that that business was continuous and did not have that two-year lapse, then yeah, I would have to retract my enforcement order, at least for that portion of the notice.
If we could check with the town on that, that would be wonderful, please. Thank you, John.
All good.
Any other questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
And John, I had a question regarding, did you find anything, any evidence that the zoning board had previously discussed this property?
I couldn't locate anything in the digital or the physical ZPA files, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else before we open to public comment?
We're gonna hear from the Lakes attorney, I guess.
We have attorney from the Lakes that's here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the volunteers for taking the time to serve in this board and I know it takes up a lot of time and a lot of effort and we do appreciate that. First of all, we want to make it clear that we're asking the board to uphold the building commissioner's decision. And we're asking you to uphold the decision because it was the right decision. We're asking you to follow the bylaws and I'm sure that you will. Bylaws 5.4, 5.5, and 5.7. 5.5 is particularly important because a non-conforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this bylaw. 5.7 ties into that. No non-conforming use shall, if changed to a conforming use, revert to a non-conforming use. And I will explain briefly how that all ties in here. And it ties in in two ways. First of all, there is a huge gap in time in operation of this business. I have submitted to the board our timeline. And it goes back to 1999 and 2001. And God rest her soul, Sophie Sheehan passed away in 1999. And God rest his soul, Mr. Sheehan passed away in 2001. Well, that was the beginning of the end of the operation of these businesses. Both companies operated by Mr., better known as Skip Sheehan, and Sheehan Mechanical were involuntarily dissolved by the court in 531, 2007. We looked and we can find no other supporting information that these companies operated after being dissolved. You can verify this by the Secretary of State's office and I attached those filings to the packet that I had sent. I left four copies, I didn't realize that this, there was a new member, I would have left, I would have left five copies. I draw your attention to the business entity filing for Albert Skip Sheehan. And this is a very, this is a meticulous, thorough man who from 1979 to 2001 makes sure, he made sure that his annual report is filed every year. And if you look on the filing times in the years, this guy never missed. Obviously, a very successful man, obviously, a very conscientious man. However, upon his passing, it all stopped. If you're familiar with the Secretary of State's operation, lots of times, they'll give you a year, two years before they enter a dissolution. They don't just do it. But this was like several years of no filings. And we have no, we have no knowledge of any tax returns filed by the corporation or anything opposing the dissolution. Oftentimes, you'll see a company go through a dissolution and they just pay the fee and they reinstate, it's common. The government wants their 500 bucks a year or whatever they pay for the LLC or the corporation. But that's not the case here. In fact, the timeline flows that both Sheehan Mechanical and Albert Sheehan, Inc., terminate right around the same time. And actually, they terminated in the same date, 531, 2007. So from, so based on that, based on that, the non-use factor, as I had outlined in our letter to the department, that alone, that is enough, that you cannot piggyback on that all those years later and grandfather it in. I respectfully suggest that what's been submitted by the applicant is insufficient. That if they had intended to show there was continuity and this was just a hiccup, if you will. And that, it could be, it's possible. But then there would be a whole history of tax filings and 920s and 1140s and so forth and so on, as you fellas, all you fellas know this. But that's not the case here. There's also a second matter, which is very important here. And this goes to the plan of land dated March 4th, 2015. And I gave you a copy of that as well. At the top of the plan, it said, "The purpose of the plan is to divide map 16 lot 36 into two conforming lots." That's right at the head of it. It's a recorded document, you could verify it for yourself, it's on the registry of deeds. So essentially, once it became, once they sought two conforming lots, divided the lot, kept one house, built another house, sold it, that's all fine. But once you do that and once you submit it as a conforming lot, then you cannot go back and change your mind and say, "Well, I want to grandfather in what it was before it was divided." That's not permissible, that's not permissible on the part of the developer. It's also worthy of note on the timeline that the, there was a pending, there was a pending foreclosure prior to this road being, this being divided up. And for those two reasons alone, that sets aside any argument of continuity, of continuity of operation. Drawing your attention to page four of my detailed correspondence, "Therefore, the legal non-conforming lot use was terminated by the approval of the plan and subsequent sales of lots one and two, creating two new lots with no description of any use for anything except residential purposes." It's almost like, it goes back to, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't have a lot, divide it in two, call it a conforming lot for the purpose of sale and building a house and then go back after it's built, after it's been approved and say, "Well, we changed our mind, we want to go back to what we used it for when it was one lot and it was owned by another company some decades, some decades before." "The quick claim deed to Mr. Flanagan does not describe any non-conforming use, it's in your package, or allowance of zoning exception, running with the quick claim deed." Note, the objection of Marley Lake and Jason Lake is not to the structures themselves, of course, but it's the use, it's the operation of an auto repair shop on the property. That's the objection. Therefore, the Lakes request the Flannigans be ordered to stop and desist immediately as they were. So it's basically, it's grounded on those two essential premises, that there's no continuity of operation here unless it can be proven and we do not see how that can be. And also, it's the dividing of the lot on the plan when it's divided in two in 2015 and one is sold and built and the other house is stayed and that's the house they're living there. Now, as to the issue of the appropriateness, I'm sure you're aware that this lane is very, very small. There's five houses on the lane. There's a house on each corner of Main and a house on each corner of Gardner. So there's five, six, seven, eight, nine houses on this little lane. And this is a two-way lane. This, you can't even drive, I drove down there today and my Honda takes up the width of the road. So if you have a truck, a delivery truck going there, it's not going to be an appropriate place to have any kind of delivery truck with materials, snap-on tools, whatever the case may be for an auto repair shop. Parts to be delivered, traffic for clients coming in, clients leaving. I mean, it's just not an appropriate place for an auto repair shop. To suggest that there's not sufficient auto repair shops in the hamlet of Groveland is just not true. There's lots of them. There's repair shops in Groveland, all over the place, on 97. So I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's an issue. I don't think there's any economic benefit here. I cannot fault the applicant for wanting to make a buck here. That's, I understand, and they just wanted to rent out the bay. By the way, the applicant is not the operator of the auto repair shop. He sublets the premises and he sublets the area to another party to operate the auto repair shop. It's not himself, for what that is worth. Also, the applicant insists that this is no harm, no foul, right? No harm, no foul, they've been operating this for years, these are good guys, there's no problem here. Well, has anybody looked at this operation? Have they scrutinized the operation? What are they doing with the oil? What are they doing with the water? As you know, it's on a hill, water runs downhill, runs downhill into the river. What about what's going into the groundwater? And all these environment issues, environmental issues that are very important. This is kind of, maybe this has gone under the radar, perhaps. There's also the safety and the traffic impact. And has there, you know, does the garage have indoor plumbing, drainage, or restroom? Well, we know that there's an outhouse, there's an outhouse in his backyard, which is facing my client's lot. How many vehicles are stored on the property? Has the town consulted with the Department of Environmental Protection or qualified environmental consultant to ensure full compliance with all the applicable regulations? Further, record keeping, as you, I'm not going to tell you something you don't already know, but record keeping for a motor vehicle repair business is a very critical thing. And the list of requirements are long, indeed. Every motor vehicle repair shop shall keep or cause to be kept a proper record of every vehicle that enters or leaves its place, a description of the motor vehicle, the date it was received, the name and the residence of the person, sign authorization for work to perform, all these requirements. Have these been thoroughly vetted and examined before you are to say, "Well, we'll give these fellows a special permit even though they can't grandfather it in, we think this is good for the neighborhood," which I can't possibly see how that would be the case. And as to the, as to the impact, the economic impact, except for the owners of the property, that seems to me to be the only one that's benefiting from this. I'm not aware, I'm not privy to the sales tax received by the town from this business. As you are aware, they have to pay sales tax on every part they sell. Have they been paying their sales tax to the Town of Groveland if it has been operating for five years? I'm not privy to this information. In sum, the applicant's application fails. One, doesn't meet the criteria. Two, it foregold these rights when it divided the property in 2015. And three, there's no continuity of operation or ownership during this timeframe. In fact, we respectfully suggest it has been a long, long time in between operation of Mr. Sheehan's businesses and Mrs. Sheehan's businesses and the subsequent operations that commenced in 2016, 2017, 2018. And if you have any questions, I gave you a packet and I outlined and provided copies of verifiable documents. The only thing that wasn't a verifiable document was the outline that we provided, but we tried to lay it out as best we could in as simple a fashion as possible. But certainly, when, in 2014, when investment capital, commercial mortgages quieted the property due to a pending foreclosure, it was clear that this was done and that then it was divided and then the current owners bought a lot and other owners bought a lot and so forth and so on. Does anybody have any questions?
Just before the questions, I do want to say, we did receive a packet from the Lakes attorney. We did receive it today, so the board did not have a chance to review that packet prior to the meeting tonight. So I just want to make that clear as we go through questions.
Could the applicant have something other than a corporation and does not need to file with the state? Could it be a sole proprietorship? It wouldn't show.
Oh, this, this I do not dispute, sir, absolutely sure. If they have evidence that there was ongoing operations during that 14-year period, 16-year period, sure, yeah, no, I understand. If they shift to sole proprietorship, but again, it would have to be in a Schedule C someplace. It would have to be in an LLC in a corporation. And certainly with their history of filings and the history of functioning as a corporation for decades, it just doesn't make any sense that all of a sudden, after that, they're going to not operate as a corporation and they're going to operate it personally. But the answer is yes, sir. Yeah, no, sir, that could be the case. I'm not privy to that. And again, sales tax to show the operation of the automobile business that's been going on for five years, you all would be privy to that. Have they been paying sales tax on parts sold all these years? I don't know.
To that, we don't get that information usually?
Not generally, that's why I think we've asked John to see if he can verify either sales tax or registration, if the LLC is being paid yearly and such a thing.
Or even verification of a sort of, of a business registered to do business in Groveland. Any of these things. And I'm sure that you all will take your time and thoroughly look at that.
Does a trash truck go down Pecker Lane? I mean, he goes down and on, does that?
I mean, I have, I have to presume a truck, I mean, there's trash service, you know, that's provided by the town, I have to presume. Again, if there's anything besides the normal town trash service, then.
Well, actually, you bring up an issue I almost forgot to bring up. Remembering now, for decades, this was a private road. That's why I put those other two plans in there. So for decades, it was a private road, but now, it's a public road. It's not a private road anymore. But for decades, it was, for decades, as my brother had said, it was almost like it was Mr. Sheehan's street. And since that time, well, actually, now that you bring it up, since that time, you should, in terms of the impact on the community, you should know that in 2016, two houses were built. And in 2018, another house was built. So since the time that that was grandfathered in, there's been three houses added to that street. A colonial in 2016, another colonial in 2016, another colonial in 2018. In fact, 11, Pecker Lane Colonial sold for $847,000 and the 2016 Colonial sold for $810,000 and the other Colonial sold for $863,000. So these are not small homes, these are large homes on a very, very small and narrow street.
Are there any questions for the Lakes representative?
Yes, I have one question. Based on your research, what were the years, again, that you determined it was a lack of tax payments made?
That would be from, going to the, going back to the time.
I apologize, I forgot.
No, no, that's okay. So it would be from, well, they were revoked in 2000. So it would be from, well, they were revoked in 2007, so it would be from, but it was before that. That's when they got the dissolution, but there were several years before that.
Well, I'm asking your position for your.
Oh, my position is, is there were no taxes paid by those corporations from 2002 until the time that the Flanagins purchased the property, like 14, 15 years later.
And that would be 2007?
Yeah, whatever, whenever Mr. Flanagan purchased his lot, out of a foreclosure situation.
And that's the position of your client, based on your research?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That was the lapse.
Now, granted, as Brad had brought up here, you know, is there another entity they use? I suppose it's possible. Was there another means of it? I suppose it's possible, but we're not privy to that. And we don't suspect everything that we saw, that unfortunately, as the, when the makers of this, the most successful business in real estate business passed, this whole thing just.
Okay, and I just have one last question. It's a matter of semantics. What is your, what is your client's position on the terminology of continuity of operation through you?
Oh, continuity of operation. Was there a business running there? And even if there was a business running there, was it running there that whole time? We don't believe so. And even if it was running there the whole time, this is a totally different neighborhood than it was back then. This is a crowded street. This isn't a street with two houses. This is a street with five, and bookend houses on each end. This is a road. This is a road, folks, that is about from here to the wall. That's the road. And it's a two-way road. And is it appropriate to have for the community, an automobile repair station with big trucks driving up the road? I was on the corner of Pecker and Lane this morning. You should see, there's about 10 kids on the end of Pecker Lane in Main waiting for a bus. Little kids. You couldn't even drive up there. A truck has a hard time taking a turn on Pecker Lane, let alone disrupting it. Just turning onto Pecker Lane, it's so tight. A large truck, it would be not practical at all.
Based upon your research, then, is there any, is there any allowance for the break in continuity at all, based upon your research for your client?
Oh, not of this duration, no, no. They can't grandfather it in.
Is there any that would be acceptable? One year, year and a half?
Oh, it's just, it's the law, but by law, I'd say two years.
Two years.
Yeah, yeah, two years. And this isn't two years, this is 14 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, as we go back and forth here, I'm sure there will be some back and forth. If we could keep comments to particular, you know, having to do with the filing, I would appreciate it. Trying to go back and forth about people not doing paperwork correctly, or foreclosures, not foreclosures, that's not really purview to the decision here. So if we could just keep it to the actual facts at hand, I would appreciate it.
Well, the only reason, respectfully, sir, the only reason I mention that, because it's important to show the distress of the situation. And I'm not making any judgment or assessment, but clearly, it was a distressed sale. That's the point. It wasn't a conventional transfer. That's why it's.
I mean, I see your point, but.
But other than that, I mean, no disrespect to the family at all.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I would like to open it up for public comment. And we'd like the rebuttal from the applicant's attorney.
Just a few points, and I think the board already picked up on these points, but he's talking about the Secretary of State's website. If you have a corporation or an LLC, you register with the Secretary of State. When he passed away, no, the family didn't continue the corporation. It doesn't mean they didn't continue a business. You switched to a DBA, and there wouldn't be any record at the Secretary of State of a DBA. There might not even be a record at the town of a DBA. Someone could be running it under their name and under their social. Now, who's going to have tax records from 20 years ago? I mean, you know, you've got to be realistic with this. And that's why we provided the timeline from family members. That is, in fact, the most accurate timeline we have, because they're the only ones that would know how this unfolded over the past 70 years. They're the only ones. And that's why we provided it. That's why I asked them for it, and the family got together, and that's the timeline they put together. You know, and again, you know, you did pick up on it. So I don't understand the whole tax filing with the city. I just don't understand sales tax. I didn't know a city collected sales tax. So I'm a little confused by that one. I don't know what that discussion was all about. And then the whole thing about a subdivision, and how that somehow affected a grandfathered use, that wouldn't have any impact on a grandfathered use. The use is where the use is. And if it's ongoing and continuous, whether it's subdivided or not, the subdivision doesn't eliminate the use. It has nothing, the two points are mutually exclusive, is what I'm trying to say. There's no nexus there. With regard to the operation of the auto repair business, and, you know, the safety and environmental issues, again, there may be standards for auto repair businesses, but that is separate from what we're here tonight. Tonight, we're here to determine, you know, what is a legitimate and acceptable use for this that's not more detrimental than what was there before. And that's it, that's the standard. And then the town and the building inspector can go and make sure that they're in compliance with operating the kind of business that's there. And will tell the board that, you know, they will. They will comply with any local ordinances or local regulations with regard to auto repair businesses. They have no problem with that at all. I think I'm going to kind of leave it at that for now, okay, with my rebuttal remarks. I'll let the neighbors talk and give their opinions on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to open it up to public comment. Please. If you could just say your name and address for the record.
My name's Nancy Anderson, and I'm Kelly Flanigan's mother. Skip Sheen was my father. And I just wanted to state Attorney Beau Palant, what he stated was incorrect. Pecker Lane was never a private road. It's always been public. We have trash that comes down, recycling. We have FedEx trucks, UPS, Amazon, and plenty of them. And even a lot of, since Main Street is one way, we get a lot of vehicles that come up, and a lot of trucks that come up. So I just wanted to correct that information. And my father passed in 2002, not 2001. And the business was transferred to me in 1991, in November of 1991. And after he passed away, it was still continued, and I ran it to 2014. That's it.
Can you state your address for the record, please?
13 Pecker Lane in Groveland.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Fabio Nicolo. I'm from 10 Pecker Lane. Known Ryan, since we moved over there, we're one of the new $800,000 houses that were put up there, but that's not what we paid for it. It was $600,000. As far as, like Nancy was saying, I mean, we get all types of cars that go up and down the street. It's not, I mean, I've seen, yes, I have seen a snap-on truck, but nowhere on the street or anything like that. They got a nice little lot that they could park cars in. But as far as, like, causing issues up and down the street, it's no more than probably what other streets would have. It is a small street, but definitely not as small as that, but still. There is, there's not, how do I word it? There's really not that much of a detriment to us around our neighborhood, so that's all I want to say. I mean, they're great people, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name's Mike Flaherty. I live at 14 Pecker Lane. I've been there nine years on Pecker Lane now. I'm one of the first new houses that was put up. Ever since we lived there, there's more and more traffic that comes up that street. But the business has never been detrimental. They come up one way, they go into it a lot, they don't impact anybody. I mean, we have people cut through all the time. And the more and more people learned about this being a full throughway, they come through. That's more detrimental to me, because some people just drive up there really fast. And the trucks that come down, they don't, they don't, they're very, you know, conscientious of the kids in the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to close the public comment period, and we'll go to the board discussion. Gentlemen, what do we think?
So I'm not so concerned with the timeline. I'm concerned with the material change in the business. It's moved from a paving business to a detailing business, and then a painting business, and now they're asking for an auto repair shop. It's, those newer businesses are not a paving business. That's a significant material change from the previous business. Like, if it was an accountant, and they wanted to start an auto repair shop, to me, it's the same kind of thing, because they're two completely different businesses. So I think we need to take that into consideration. I'm also aware of and appreciate that we haven't heard from any residents opposed to this business continuing on in some form in that location. So I think we need to take that into account as well.
Yeah, I'd agree with that for sure. Ryan?
I would agree with everything.
Mm-hmm. Ryan, what's that? John?
I don't think you can argue, well, I don't see much argument. Mrs. Skip's daughter said that it did continue. And I don't see much difference between a single, is it a single stall? Well, it's fine.
Thank you, Skip.
So there are two stalls. One of them is used for the painting business, and one of them is used for the auto repair.
What kind of painting business?
Interior, exterior.
House painting. And he still does, my understanding, he still does some of the detailing, auto detailing. It's the house painting.
I just wasn't sure if it was an auto body shop.
No auto body, detailing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And just in response to your question, so the special permit is for a change or an extension. Thank you very much.
I do, you know, like you, I remember Skip.
Yeah, I know it continued, but I don't know how long.
And I think it was a diesel mechanic shop as well. I wasn't friends with him, but I remember the shop.
Any other concerns besides that? Any other concerns besides that?
I believe that shop was like, I don't know, his daughter can answer it. I don't think it was at that same, it was in the same plot of land, but it wasn't that same exact garage, if I remember correctly. It was down in.
Same garage.
Same garage.
Maintaining his equipment, right?
I really don't see a bigger shop down that way.
I can't.
Yeah, we're talking.
Yeah, for me, I mean, I don't know how concerned I am with the material change, because I think it's, for me, it's similar enough. But again, I think we even need to, you know, see if there's a definition of the word material as it applies here to that change, that, to be honest, I'm not familiar with myself. So maybe that's something that we can confirm. And then I think the, I think the timeframe for offering the business is something that we, that we should be able to verify. I think there's ways with the town that we should be able to, can verify that there was a business. As far as I'm aware, you know, there's nothing that says, and I could be wrong here, so bear with me, that needs to be the same business operating at that location, just a business that was, that was operating at that location. So the fact that the business was done and dissolved, in my eyes, doesn't necessarily preclude the front of the business from applying that. Just as if someone else bought a house or a non-conforming law, you know, made it non-conforming, a sale, a change of the ownership of the house doesn't change the status of that law, right?
Well, there's a lot of people, is there anybody opposed to this?
Yeah.
Attorney and branches?
I could address this issue of the inconsistency of the applicant's proposal, as if to say, I've run a business for 36 years. I have records going back 30 years. To stand here and say that we don't have any records going back to 10 years, 12 years, that's a stretch. And I think the applicant, the burden is on the applicant to show that the use was not abandoned, because if the use was abandoned for more than two years, their entire application fails. So I think that I would ask the board to look very closely at the issue of the discontinuance of that.
Well, that's what we've asked for the town to see, to see if you can or cannot verify that.
Well, not even, not even the town, but look to the applicant themselves. Bank records, this wouldn't take, even if they used a personal income, a personal return, as you were suggesting, they did be a DBA, you could order the, you could order the transcripts from the IRS. You could order them and prove them. So I think we would only respectfully ask that that be verified. Thank you.
To keep them for seven years.
I mean, I would think that a business should keep those records, but I also think the town should have on record if there's a business, if there's a business agreement on the town. I mean, I know my wife has a business in Georgetown, and she has to go down and file with the town every year that she has her own, so, I don't know. So I, so.
I don't know if this is, can help you. We do have a 2016 business certificate for the detailing business, which is how we established, wasn't a two-year gap. We just don't have a prior. But again.
I do want to stop here, just because I see Mr. Lake's attorney getting ready to jump up as well. We have kind of closed the comment period, so this is just us discussing at this point. All right, thank you. But again, I think that's something that we should see if the town can verify.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, again, if a town doesn't have the ability to verify either way, then I think that, you know, that's another issue. But if the town has records either show business to a certain point, and then stopped for whatever gap that was, and then continued, or if there was a continuation all the way through, I think that should, and having not, actually worked for the town, I would, I would think that there's something, that's something that is somewhat easily verifiable by the town. And then I think if it's not verifiable, we can cross that bridge when we come to it. Again, then I think the burden does shift to the applicant to say, can you provide documentation showing?
I agree.
But I also think that we would definitely like time to thoroughly review the packet that we were given today as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I do have one quick question, Mr. Chair. It might be a parallel question, but is there a plan in place for businesses like this for mitigation factors as part of the special permit, where this is a shop that will have, repair shop, where one of the attorneys had mentioned about environmental issues and things like that? Is that part of the special permit that they must provide some level of mitigation that, God forbid, they did have a spill, or a, you know, one of the EPA truck comes and picks up, you know, a 55-gallon drum of oil and take it away, outside of using it inside their facility to use it for, like, heating oil? Are there things that are in place that kind of define that?
Correct, as part of a new application, that would, that would be required to approve of the board before, you know, or answer our questions as to that.
Okay.
Maintenance plan, basically.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a maintenance plan now, or?
But I think, at this point, would we, I think it's prudent to wait to see if we have the questions answered, give some time to review the documentation.
I agree.
Yes, to find out if it's going to be a continuation or a new application.
Right, yeah. Because I think that's, guides our way forward as well. Looking at dates here for the continuation of this calendar here. So looking a couple weeks out, the next regular Wednesday would be the 17th. I'm gone that week. I'm in New Jersey, unfortunately.
I think you should be.
Very unfortunately. What's that?
What week?
The week of the 15th, so the 17th is the Wednesday.
October 1st is the next one.
Yeah, and October 1st is the following Wednesday.
September or October?
October 1st.
So I think October 1st would be the next viable meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to be gone the 19th.
Yeah, I'm away that week, too.
So October first.
So October first, good for everyone?
Yep.
I think we have that.
And that will give us time to make sure we keep the tires and everything and answer questions. Is there anyone with a motion?
I make a motion that we continue it to October first until we find out what's, you know, do we have time to review and find out if the applicant has any documentation that we can see.
I second that.
All right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The unanimous table to, continue, rather, to October, October first. Thank you. And thank you, everyone. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, approval of minutes, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting?
I read them. They're awesome.
Does anyone have a chance to review John's fine work?
Motion to accept.
All right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes. Well, I should say, it's a pass and what abstain, because Brian was not.
Yes, I had abstain.
Thank you. All right. Any other items not reasonably anticipated? John, anything from you? No? Gentlemen, anything unreasonably not anticipated?
No, sir.
All right. So next meeting will be October first, right, right, right here at seven-thirty PM. Be there, be square.
You said seven-thirty, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn at, what are we, at eight-twenty PM?
So motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night, Groveland.